Good morning, everybody. It is 9:00 AM. It is Friday, April 14th. This is the Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting. Welcome to everyone. I hope everybody's drying out a little bit after the crazy weather we had this week. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sarah Pardue. John Carr. Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Penny Pompey.
Present.
Sam Coliando.
Here.
Laurie Veniker.
Here.
Kylie Harper Larson.
Here.
And Kerr Patel.
Here.
Angela Van.
Here.
Brian Stenberg.
Here.
David Searle. We have quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And do we have proof of publication?
Good morning, and yes, Chair, we do.
Good morning. Thank you. Okay. Any postponements?
There are none.
Very good. Gender approval. Okay. Consideration of the minutes. We've all got the minutes from the March 10th meeting. Anybody care to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, just one thing about the minutes.
Yes.
I did receive the paper packet, and Page 2 was missing from my page. But I did see it online. So it was online. And just one thing about that is that there was no mention of the vote for Vice Chair. It wasn't documented. So I would motion to approve the minutes, adding that vote that we had for Vice Chair and the...
There wasn't mention. Yeah, that was a mention. That was under update.
That was under John Carr. Congratulated.
But now it's a matter of business.
If you see Page 3 of 3, Page 1 of 3, Page 2 of 3 is missing.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I'll motion to approve it with that addition, if you can add it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. Mission, all approved?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone know? Good. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving down. Any comments from the public on non-agenda items? I don't think we have any. Okay. Comments from the Chair, just briefly. I'd like to welcome our newest member. We have Brian Stenberg joining us today down at the end. Welcome to the Commission. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to it as well.
Thank you. And I understand Jay Nisburg has resigned, and a replacement will be offered up probably in time for the next meeting, hopefully. So we wish him well as he goes forward as well. So really no other comments from the Chair. So let's move right into Item 3A1, Lake Worth Crossing. So we have the applicant available. Good morning.
Good morning.
Great. Okay. You're up.
Hopefully, it's easy. Good morning. I'm Lauren McClellan with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm presenting the Lake Worth Crossing small-scale amendment on behalf of the property owner. The request before the Planning Commission is an amendment to adjust the previous conditions of approval. It's not a change to the commercial high with an underlying two land use. Generally, the amendment to the conditions is to delete the mixed-use-related design conditions, to allocate proportionate, approve square footage to this property, and then to delete the conditions that required the property to be developed as a lifestyle commercial So the property is... The 9.34-acre property is located on the south side of Lake Worth Road, west of the Florida Turnpike, within the urban suburban tier. Surrounding the property is pretty much all developed. If you've been out there, Polo Gardens, the residential, is starting to come up out of the ground right now. And then Polo Legacy is finished. And then the Catalina Project is, I think, pretty much done. I think it's leasing up. The property has a commercial high, as I mentioned, with an underlying two units per acre future land use designation. And as I mentioned, this application is not proposing to change that designation. The surrounding future land uses are also higher intensity uses, commercial high and mixed use to the west, commercial high to the east, HR8 to the east, and then MR5 to the south. So this shows what the original approval was in 2009 that had the conditions imposed on it. This encompassed the subject property on the eastern side and then what is now Polo Gardens, a portion of Polo Gardens, to the west. The conditions that were imposed on this roughly 20-acre property were to limit the total square footage for the full acres to 300,000 square feet, and then to require block structure development with alleys, with onsite, with on-street parking, et cetera. Also required a mix of uses, which included residential, and for structured parking and vertical integration. So a little bit of history. Back in 2018, the western half-ish, like 8.83 acres of the 19-acre site, came in and modified the conditions for only that portion. So basically, the application that's in front of you today is to do the same thing, to make the same types of modifications. And so here those modifications are. It's a lot of words on there. Basically, it's just... I'll just summarize it, just saying that this... Again, I'm going to use the word "half." It's not really "half." But this half of the project is going to have 154,210 square feet of the allotted allocation, that there will be no tenant larger than 65,000 square feet, no single retail tenant larger than 65,000 square feet, and that we will connect to the former other half of this site. And so these are the same conditions that were approved for the Haley Farms, now Polo Gardens site. Staff is recommending approval of this application because it's consistent with the comp plan, the urban tier, the surrounding area, the West Lake Worth Road Neighborhood Plan, as well as other applications that have been approved for the rest of the ordinance, frankly. If the Board has any other questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. Okay. I'll turn to my colleagues up here. Do we have any questions? I'll start down with Dagmar.
No.
Any?
No.
Anker?
Just one question for... I guess it's for staff on the conditions. On the conditions of approval on Point Number 1, you're talking about equivalent traffic generation. So the uses can be changed from commercial retail to something that's equivalent? Is that how you're doing that?
If you would prefer... Because we do have a slide on the conditions in the staff presentation, so we could go ahead if you would prefer and go through the staff presentation.
We can do that.
And then if there's any questions on the staff presentation, we'll take those. Sure.
Good morning. Jerry Lodge with the Planning Division. This is Lake Worth Crossing. The site's just over nine acres. It's located along the southwest corner of Lake Worth Road and Hooks Road, just west of Florida Turnpike. The site is shown right there in the red and white outline. It has a future land use designation of commercial high and underlying two units per acre with conditions of approval. The amendment request is not asking to change the future land use of the site, rather it's requesting to modify previously adopted conditions of approval, which require it to be developed as an LCC. The concurrent zoning application in process is requesting to rezone the site from AR to MUPD in order to develop about 110,000 square feet of hospital and hotel and medical office uses. The site's located in the West Lake Worth Road Neighborhood Plan area, which was received and filed by the Board in 2009. And that little box there, the yellow outline, is the subject site. And as you can see, it was intended within the Neighborhood Master Plan to be used for commercial uses. So a little history on lifestyle commercial centers. In 2008, the Board adopted text amendments, establishing them in the plan as a mixed-use development option for mid-block commercial sites. The LCC was intended to be a smaller version of traditional marketplace developments for shopping and entertainment, which would meet cultural and residential needs, and they were subject to specific design guidelines, including providing open space, no large single tenants, integrating uses, and creating a pedestrian-oriented design that included a main street as well. So following those texts, the text amendment, 2008 and 2009, after the LCC policies, the Board adopted commercial designations for two sites that were mid-block. Each site was adopted with conditions to be developed as an LCC. The subject site was included as a part of a larger 19-acre site known as Lake Worth Turnpike Southwest Commercial. And after no additional requests were submitted, which requested LCC developments, and the two previously adopted ones had not been developed yet, the LCC provisions were mostly deleted from the plan in 2017. Around the same time in 2017, the Board adopted revisions to conditions of approval, which deleted the LCC requirements for Lake Worth Commercial west of the site, and it did the same in 2018 for Haley Farms Commercial. And this left the subject site as the only one left in the county with conditions requiring it to be developed as an LCC. To summarize the request, the amendment's not proposing to change the future land use, rather it's requesting to modify the conditions of approval, as stated, as are no longer appropriate given recent changes to the plan and similarly situated properties have received similar amendments. The applicant's proposing to delete the LCC requirements and retain conditions for vehicular and pedestrian cross-connection and cap for 65,000 square foot maximum single tenant. In addition, the site would be limited to 154,000 square feet of commercial retail or equivalent uses. So the proposed condition for 154,000 square feet is derived from the original amendment for the larger 19-acre site, which had a condition for the overall 19 acres to be capped at 300,000 square feet. In 2018, when Haley Farms was adopted, it received a proportionate share of that 300,000 square foot cap, which was about 146,000 square feet. And Lake Worth Crossing is assigned 154,000 square feet, the remainder of that 300,000, through condition of approval. So staff finds the proposed amendment consistent with the recent comprehensive plan amendments and that the request is appropriate, as the site's last remaining with conditions of approval, requesting LCC or requiring development as an LCC. And those policies had been mostly deleted from the plan. In addition, the proposed uses in the zoning application are compatible with the densities and intensities along the corridor on Lake Worth Road. Staff's recommending approval, and the motion is to recommend approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you. Anker, I'll go back with you then, if that answers your question or if you had another question.
It's still... I'm still not fully understanding of that. My question is, the maximum square footage you're putting on there is 154,000 square feet, correct? It cannot grow because the way the language read, it's equivalent traffic use. For example, light industrial comes in, the traffic usage will be less, so can they grow from 154,000 to something else? Because that's how the language reads to me. That's what the question was.
Right. So if there is a use that is lower traffic generation, technically, yes, they could exceed that square footage based on that equivalent traffic part of the condition.
Okay. Can I answer my question?
Good. Barbara?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
With Haley Farms, they removed all of these same conditions, including the architectural facade treatments for the 65,000 square feet.
Yes.
But I... So I guess with the MUPD, there are some... That's a zoning thing, but they work on that facade so that the 65,000 square foot large building there would be environmentally...
Would be required to meet all zoning regulations through MUPD zoning districts, but all of the adopted conditions through the LCC requirements are proposed to be removed. So they're separate requirements.
But both have been treated the same. Haley had all these conditions removed.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Angela? Pam? Kylie? Hannah? Okay. Okay. Any further questions for staff or applicants from the Commission? Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion from the Board.
Is there any public comment?
Not on this one.
Okay.
They almost got it.
Could I have discussion, or does that happen after the motion?
I'm sorry.
After the motion.
Yeah, after the motion, we can discuss. So...
Mayor?
Please.
I move to approve Lake Worth Crossing to revise the previously adopted conditions of approval in accordance with this recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Okay. Now...
Now discussion.
Sir?
I'm still a little confused about that because if the square footage can grow, but the third point in the language talks about no single retail tenant can be 65,000 square feet, but if the use changes to, like I said, light industrial or something else, there's no... We're not limiting what a single use on that would be. So why would we put equivalent traffic use on a text amendment if we're not identifying it further down with the curve? That's what my question is on that, or discussion, I guess.
Okay. Fair enough. I'll start down on this sentence here, if anybody else... Yeah? Nothing? Anybody else? I'll just work up this way. Have any questions, or anybody have any information we can share with Anker?
Maybe staff or the attorney.
Sure. So yes, so the reference to the condition language, which states equivalent trips, that's a fairly common language that you've seen in conditions of approval. And essentially, that recognizes that within the future land use designation they're seeking, there are a variety of different uses that are allowed. So every time, if there was a minor change when it gets through zoning or site plan, it doesn't have to come back to the Board for an ordinance amendment, but it's still capped specific to any retail tenant. They would still be limited to that 65,000 square feet. But the equivalent trips just allows a little bit of flexibility that can be addressed at site plan and zoning level and wouldn't require to keep coming back to amend an ordinance. But that's common language that is in other conditions for other projects.
Okay. Are you comfortable?
No. So I think because the original was 300,000 square feet, and you're splitting that up, and you're at 154,000. So if you're going to increase from that square footage, there should be a condition of how that procedure should work. Because again, it's something that the BCC should be able to look at, because the BCC is the one that defined the 300,000 square feet onto that property in sight. So if they're going to go and make it larger instead of 154,000, if they come back with a 200,000, the trip equivalence would handle it, but then the massing would be much bigger.
Just for some clarification on the... So that 300,000 square feet was in order for that site to meet our long-range traffic policy 3.5D? So that's why those... We have that equivalent trip generation. It's not really related to the FAR. You know, they still would have to stay under their max FAR that's allowed under CH. It's just in order to meet the traffic, the long-range traffic study.
Then I'm comfortable.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion amongst the Commissioners?
One quick question.
Sure, sir.
At the end of the day, zoning really runs back through this to begin with. So if there's any change to it, they would... They'd be the ones to pick it up, correct?
Yes. So this will go to the zoning commission, I believe, next month.
Yeah.
And then if there's any modifications based on however percentage or uses, then it could potentially go back to the Board.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Nothing further? Then we'll call the question. May we have a roll call?
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Laurie Veniker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Sam Coliando?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
And Kerr Patel?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Brian Stenberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving along to Item 3. Yes?
Mr., I have a question, and it's not regarding this project, but I did want to wait because it's in the area. The apartments that are along the access from the Turnpike, it says HR8. Can you recall? I remember it was quite a high number as far as density was concerned, because we did do the workforce housing and whatnot. Does anybody have that information of, instead of HR8, it is actually how many units to the acre? Wasn't it over 20?
We have... I think Bryce is here who worked on that project. That's Lake Worth Royale. See if he can recall. It was pretty high, because I think they maxed out all of their bonuses.
Hi, Bryce Van Horn, the Planning Division. Yes, I was the project manager for that amendment. I don't recall the specific number. It wasn't as high as 20. I think it was around 11 or 12 units per acre. It included transferred development rights.
Right.
On that project. And it has some workforce housing requirements, onsite, two-bedroom units and...
Okay, good. I just... Yeah, it would be nice if we had the real numbers, you know, so that you can really see, you know, the traffic and congestion in the area. But thank you for the answer.
Okay. Now, moving on again to... This is the Item 3B1. This is the proposed Commerce text amendment. I guess we're going to hear from Mr. Fisher.
Yes. Good morning. Finally get to do a presentation.
Wow. On top of the food chain.
All right. So this is regarding the Commerce future land use designation, which you all are very well aware of. And the Board of County Commissioners did adopt this new future land use. I just want to give brief history for some newer members and anyone in the public that may not be as familiar with this future land use designation. So Commerce was adopted to have an industrial future land use designation that only allows for light industrial uses. As you all are aware, there, over the past years, have been a number of requests for industrial in the tier. Staff had consistently recommended denial because the comprehensive plan didn't speak to those types of uses within the tier. Recognizing the need for some kind of a lighter industrial use and not wanting heavy, noxious-type industrial uses, this future land use designation was adopted, not just for the agricultural reserve, but also for the urban suburban tier. Specific to the agricultural reserve tier, it did include some location criteria, kind of limit the scope of where it could be located within, and also did include a preserve requirement. Subsequent to the adoption, as site-specific amendments were coming through, there was discussion both here, the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, about the potential scope and what the ultimate maximum square footage total of light industrial uses could be within the agricultural reserve tier. So the Board of County Commissioners did provide staff direction to evaluate, you know, what those maximum potentials could be, and then explore potentially reducing the FAR or some other mechanism by which to limit that scope that could ultimately be built in the area. So what's currently adopted is a floor-area ratio, or FAR, of 0.45, and that's both for the agricultural reserve use of this future land use designation, as well as if it is to be developed in the urban suburban tier. We've looked at the applications that have come in, and almost all of them have been below that 0.45, with an average in that lower 0.3s. So what this text amendment would do would be to reduce the allowable FAR from 0.45 to 0.35, roughly a 20... Between 20% to 25% reduction just within the agricultural reserve tier, and only for new applications. So, you know, there are a number of applications in process. They did apply when there was that 0.45 FAR. Nothing restricts the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission from recommending, as you have on some past amendments, through condition of approval, to have a lower FAR. And the other component, so that's the main component of this amendment, the second was not to change the location criteria within the agricultural reserve, but to better clarify it. I know there was some concern with a progression westward, because there's language, if you're adjacent to a site with industrial, commercial, and have access. So it was, I think, discussed here, and certainly at the Board of County Commissioners, that if you're mid-block on State Road 7 and your site has granted this future land use, was to stop another parcel from having interconnectivity and then using that to access State Road 7. So this just provides additional clarification to that location criteria to just make that point very evident. Doesn't help if I move forward on my computer. So again, this... I'm not going to recap. I kind of did that in the overview. But the future land use designation was adopted in 2022, following multiple requests for industrial in the tier. Again, there were two main components. One, adding this future land use designation for the two tiers. And then the second main component was the additional policy guidance specific to the agricultural reserve tier. So it's a little bit hard to see the text at the top of the screen. Oh, you can see it over there. But that just highlights what the proposed text amendments are. Again, adding clarification to, if you're west of State Road 7, it's only on the roadways of the Boynton Beach corridors and the Atlantic Avenue corridors. So you cannot be mid-block on State Road 7 and have that progression westward just because you're adjacent. And then the main component, which is on the second slide here, is modifying Table 22E1 to strike out the 0.45 in the agricultural reserve and have that range. The reason we have the range of 0.35 to 0.45 with the footnote is to acknowledge that there were applications that were submitted with the 0.45, so we didn't want to create an inconsistency. But we have language in that note, assuming this is adopted by the Board, that any subsequent applications are limited to that 0.35 FAR. So again, briefly, the staff assessment. So this is largely based on Board direction. The amendment modifies the maximum allowable FAR within the agricultural reserve. It does not change, but rather provides additional clarification for the locations of properties west of State Road 7. And again, makes no other changes to the Commerce flu and does not affect the allowable uses within the flu. So staff is recommending approval. And with that, I will turn it over to the Board for any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll start with my leftover here. Brian, any questions? Kylie? Pam?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for doing this. I know the alliance, you know, with the reasonable civic organization that they are that really suggested this 0.35, because there are so many applications coming in, and it is the agricultural reserve. So thank you for doing this and clarifying that location. Great job.
Barbara?
I can echo that. Thank you so much, not only for the clarity on the FAR, but also for the site, the location clarity. We just saw evidence or feared evidence of creep, as we called it. So greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Anker?
All right. I do have a question. On the preserve requirements, you've talked about anything that's over 16 acres. What happens if they're under 16 acres?
So the threshold in which a preserve requirement kicks in is at 16 acres. So for instance, if there was a 10-acre site, there would be no preserve requirement.
Is there a green space requirement or something that comes into place, or...
Well, there are still, per the zoning code with the... You know, there's the maximum FAR, and there's onsite retention. So there's other things through the zoning code, so it's not like the entire site would be built out. But in terms of an actual preserve within the tier, that kicks in at 16 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Penny? Dagmar?
I just want, for clarification, so everybody really understands. They came up with this 16-acre amount of property, okay? So if somebody comes in with a 20-acre piece, they only have to come up with 40% preservation area on the four-acre piece. Is that the way it works?
And very good clarification point. You are correct. So the way it works in the tier for... I'll kind of go through the three main buckets of residential, commercial, and industrial very briefly. So residential, you're very familiar with the 60-40 PUD, so you have a 40% development area, 60% preserve area. For commercial properties, what is, had been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners and is in the comprehensive plan, is once you hit that 16-acre threshold, all of the acreage applies to the calculation of the preserve area. The difference with Commerce, what the Board adopted, was it exempts that first 16 acres. So a great example that Dagmar just provided is if it's 20 acres, if it was a commercial property, the preserve calculations would be based on the full 20 acres. With Commerce, that calculation is based on the differential between 16, when that threshold was hit, and the actual acreage of the property. So it would be 40%, not 60%, because Commerce has a 40% preserve requirement on four acres.
Okay, and then the other thing is, we do have quite a few projects that have already been through the process, and so the ones that have already been through, they are still allowed to do the 0.45 FAR.
Yes, right. So essentially, and this is with other types of changes to the comprehensive plan as well, we would go by the language at which such time that application was received. So this would be applicable to any future.
Okay, and I was really hoping for 0.30. Who came up with 0.35?
So we did an assessment of the property sizes of those that haven't yet been, because a lot of the ones that are eligible and that we'll likely see have already been submitted, and then looking at the floor area ratio of the sites that we had received, and with that reduction to 0.35, still being more than a 20%, felt that was reasonable, but certainly, Planning Commission can certainly recommend a different figure.
Okay, I think I'm the lone wolf on that. But the other thing is that I've brought up several times, and it didn't even really come up for discussion, is maxing out the square footage for a single user in the ag reserve. I think there's, we've all been very concerned about regional users coming into the ag reserve, because users in the ag reserve were supposedly specifically for employment opportunities and needs of the people and the farming in the ag reserve. Did that not hit the pavement at all, as far as maxing out the square footage for a single user in the ag reserve? Did that not come up in conversation?
As part of this amendment, we did not consider that, but again, if that is something that the Planning Commission would like to roll into a recommendation.
Okay, well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think that's a pretty important thing, and hopefully somebody in the commission or zoning or somewhere will pick up on that. But thank you, good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, nothing further up here, so maybe I have a motion to approve this.
I'll motion to approve staff recommendations.
Just checking, no public comments on this one?
That's fine. Getting close, though.
I'll motion to approve staff's recommendation for these revisions and adding the revising the allowable FAR and adding additional clarification to location criteria.
Second. Second, Sam? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sam Calindo?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
Encore Fatale?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Brian Stenberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, precious. Okay, moving on, 3B2, Erickson, Boynton Beach. May we hear from Stephanie? I beg your pardon, Jennifer, I'm sorry.
My name is Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. Appreciate the opportunity to present the Erickson Senior Living project. This name may sound familiar to some of you. We presented a text amendment last year to allow for a second location for a congregate living facility in the ag reserve, and this Board supported the text amendment, and the Board initiated the text amendment. So we are here before you today requesting a land use change for that same property. And one point which I think helps support the land use change, this data was provided by the U.S. Housing and Urban Development and indicated by 2050, Palm Beach County's population of 65 and older will double. And the highest concentration of 55 and older communities is in the ag reserve and just east of the ag reserve. The need for a future land use for the congregate living facility is supported by the need of the future population, of future aging population. So specifically, where is the site located? It is on the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard, just west of the Florida Turnpike. It's 93.5 acres in size. It was known as the Mazzoni property, and it's under contract by Erickson Senior Living. Our request is for a future land use amendment to go from AGR to institutional CLR on 62.33 acres of the property, and to support the text amendments that are needed for the CLR location and map amendment. This is a map that reflects the future land use designations in this area. You can see the proposed change to institutional CLR identified on the map in blue, and this graphic demonstrates that although the entire property is 93.5 acres in size, the request for the land use change is only on 62.3 acres. The remaining portion of the property will maintain an AGR land use designation. When it goes through the zoning process, that portion that has an AGR land use designation will receive a conservation easement, designating it as a preserve parcel. This map demonstrates if the future land use is initiated, the proposed zoning would be MUPD, again, on the 62.3 acres. So this map identifies the property. The comprehensive plan allows for maximum intensity of this site to be 1,192 beds for the CLF use, and 150 beds for the skilled nursing. We, staff has placed a condition of approval on the project that ties the intensity to the proposed zoning application that's in process. Therefore, the maximum intensity being approved would be 1,192 beds for the congregate living facility, and 70 beds of skilled nursing. This diagram identifies the division between the development area and the preserve area. The flesh color identifies the development area will be clustered on 55.4 acres of the property, and then the rest of the property will be in preservation. There'll be about six acres of preservation included within the land use change and zoning application for institutional CLF, and then there'll be about 30 acres that's outside of that land use and zoning. The total preservation is about 36, just under 37 acres, and the development area is 55.4. I'm showing you this graphic because I think that it's indicative of what's going on with the area as far as development. You can see the Erickson property here, and then a map showing the Logan property. This Board supported the essential housing request for Logan, and then to the west of that is Canyon District Park. The Canyon District Park is about a 50-acre active recreational park with ball fields and playgrounds and soccer fields. The area east of that, the two preserves that we're providing, both on Logan and on Erickson, is proposed to be a passive park with walking trails that can be utilized by the residents within the general area. In conclusion, our request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We meet the county policies and directives. We're consistent with the ag reserve. We're consistent with the compatibility requirements, and the services exist to support the development. In conclusion, when you think about the development potential for this property, this development that's being proposed is considered kind of a low-impact development. An advantage of the proposed project is that all our preservation is being provided onsite. I think this is one of the very few projects in the area that is providing onsite preservation, and we're also, our preservation is intended to benefit the residents that live in the area. The use is a good tax-based contributor, and a lot of, we always get questions about traffic, and when you think about the congregate living facility compared to other potential uses for the property, whether it be the essential housing or the Commerce land use request, the CLR land use is a lower traffic generating use. The use has no impact to the schools. There are two schools directly in the area of the proposed project, and ultimately, this type of use helps to keep families together. It creates for a multi-generational community and is a needed use in the area. We do have standing, planning recommendation of approval. We've been presenting the project all along to Cobra and to Bark, and we have support for the land use change, and we'll continue to work with those communities. We're requesting support from this Board, and we agree with the conditions of approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, Stephanie?
We have Jerry Lodge, who will give the presentation for this one.
Thank you.
Hello again, Jerry Lodge of the Planning Division. This item has two components. First is the text amendment, which the Board initiated this past August, and second is the companion future land use amendment, requesting a change to future land use from AGR to institutional with underlying congregate living residential. So a brief history of CLR. In 2017, CLR was created for the urban suburban tier only, for sites seeking to develop congregate living facilities. At the same time, there were three text amendment requests that were in process for the ag reserve to allow this huge use, which had not been previously developed in this year due to density constraints. Two of the proposed amendments were withdrawn, and then in April of last year, the third one was adopted by the Board and is known as All Seasons Del Rey. Included with the All Seasons Del Rey text amendment were specific policies which allowed a CLR future land use to be within the ag reserve tier, subject to specific criteria, which include eight units per acre for sites that were five acres or larger, and also they needed to front Lions Road and be between Atlantic Avenue and Litten Boulevard. There's also the requirement for 50% offsite and 10% onsite preserve area. The applicant's proposed text amendment is requesting to revise policies for the CLR flu in the tier, which includes a new development option that allows for a 60% onsite preserve area, also to allow the same preserve uses as those permitted within the essential housing flu, and that includes up to 10% of the preserve area being utilized as a water management area with some enhanced environmental features, and also to allow sites to be eligible for CLR in a different location, specifically would allow properties fronting Boynton Beach Boulevard between the Turnpike and Acme Dairy Road to request CLR. So this map shows properties along Boynton Beach Boulevard that would be affected by the proposed text amendment if adopted, which is highlighted by the red dashed line. As you can see, all of the properties that would become eligible if adopted for the CLR land use are already in process for flu applications. This includes the subject of this amendment, Erickson, Boynton Beach, as well as Logan Ranch Residential on the adjacent west, which is requesting essential housing, and B.C. Commerce Center on the north side of Boynton Beach Boulevard requesting the Commerce future land use. So back to the flu request, the applicant's proposing to change to the land use on 93.51 acres located on the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard, east of Acme Dairy Road. They're requesting to change the site from AGR to institutional and underlying congregate living residential on just over 63 acres, and for 31 acres to remain as AGR. The rezoning applications proposing to change the zoning district from AGR to MUPD in order to develop 1,192 CLF beds and 70 skilled nursing beds. All right, so existing comp plan policies allow mixed or multiple use plan developments to utilize the maximum density for CLF beds under the residential flu, as well as the maximum intensity permitted within the institutional flu. The CLR flu allows for up to eight units per acre in the ag reserve tier, and calculating CLF beds is accomplished by multiplying the density by the average persons per household, and then by the acreage with the CLR flu. The site's also able to utilize the maximum intensity under the institutional flu for the proposed nursing home beds, which is calculated based on one nursing home bed per 1,000 square feet of lot area with that institutional flu. All right, so here's the subject site shown in the red outline. It's primarily surrounded by AGR future land use designations. Existing commercial uses are located west of the site, including Canyon Town Center and Cobblestone Plaza. Additional commercial and institutional uses are located on the northwest corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. West of the site are existing civic uses, including an elementary school, middle school, and Canyon District Park. East of the site is Florida Turnpike in the urban suburban tier, and directly west and north of the site are the previously discussed amendments in process. To summarize staff, staff's analysis of this amendment, the proposed CLF will provide additional housing diversity within the tier, and is consistent with the recommendations made by the consultants in the ag reserve master plan, which recommended a variety of housing types, including residential institutional uses such as nursing homes and assisted living facilities. Additionally, the proposed request is compatible with surrounding future land uses, and it required 37-acre preserve as located on the south side of the site, which creates a pretty large distance between the existing homes that are there now. Staff's recommending two conditions of approval. The first is to limit development of the site to a maximum 1,192 CLF beds and 70 skilled nursing beds, as is proposed in the concurrent zoning application, and the second proposed condition is to require the flu text and rezoning to all be heard at the same adoption hearing. Staff's recommending approval with those conditions, and the motion is the same. That concludes presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, a little bit of a questions. I just had one quick question. Obviously, this is fairly close to Bethesda West. Where is the closest fire rescue station?
So there is a station on the east side of the Turnpike. It's not, actually not too far, it's off the screen, just south of Boynton Beach Boulevard. I don't know, actually, we can pull up the, Jerry, can you pull up the fire rescue letter? It should say the station that will be serving this site.
Which is going to be expanding, in all probability. I mean, if you've got 1,200-plus, you know, people in an ACLF, plus 150 skilled, you're gonna, they're gonna be busy.
Lux is a waste in there.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. Good thing of PDF and Word search. So, yeah, so Palm Beach County Fire Rescue stated that this would be served by Fire Rescue Station number 47, which is approximately 1.7 mile, 1.75 miles from the property.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? 1.7 miles? Because isn't it right there on the other side of the Turnpike? Is that Station 48?
That station may not be serving this site, so I know it's probably the most approximate, but it may not be within the...
Yeah, so their statement says the property is primarily served by the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Station number 47, located at 7950 Enterprise Center Circle, and then they state that's approximately 1.7 mile, 75 miles, so let me see where that.
They're gonna be busy. Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. I'll start down on the other end here. Any questions, Brian, for staff or applicant? Okay, Kylie?
Just a commentary that I know as we're growing as a county, we have to serve the needs of our citizens, but I will say that I have been lucky enough to be on this property, and it was in active agricultural production. And that farmer who had the lease has since retired and has sold his packing house property. So I just wanted to make sure that that consideration, that fact, was brought up, that even though this acreage had been previously used for active agricultural production, that agricultural production always requires a marketplace, a facility, some, something for it, and that facility is no longer in existence for that property.
Sam?
I have a question for the applicant. You said something about 36 acres for preserve. I know the requirement is 60%, and you said something about 36, and I know staff said 37. I came up with 37.39. How's our math here?
The math? Let me get my notes.
Just as long as we're going to commit to that 60%, whatever it is, but I come out with 37.39, and you were adding them all up.
It is 60% of the CLR.
Yeah.
Designation, and so we had two types of preserve. We have one within the CLR, which is 6.16, and then we have a portion of the preserve that's not included within the CLR, which is 30.8.
I think we just rounded up. I think that's, we were just giving like a general.
Okay.
Preserve calculation.
Okay, yeah, that's 36.39 acres. Okay.
Right, and we'll make sure, as this goes through the process, that 60% is definitely shown.
shown on the plan as a preserve area.
Thank you, Chair. I must state at the outset that I fully support this land use change on this location, recognizing what my fellow Commissioner Kylie Harper-Larson said, and I do appreciate that, but I do admire the plan for this as well that Jay Morton and Associates have come up with. My concern is, and continues to be, and this hopefully will be addressed by the Board of County Commissioners and by zoning, the number of beds. We're beyond 1,200, and although it's very easily said that this is a low-traffic generator, everyone really needs to recognize that there's staff that goes along with supporting these beds, whether, obviously skilled nursing has a higher ratio, but the independent and assisted living also has considerable staff, and this is a large project, and that staff will be coming and going in shifts during the day. So, let's all be aware that that's an impact. It's not just the people who live there. Also, I believe the Chair just said, well, you know, it is laudable that it's not far from the hospital just to the west, what we call Bethesda West, but the issue is how to get there. Acme Dairy Road and Boynton Beach Boulevard at this point create a challenge traffic-wise, and I just, you know, I'm putting this out there on the record. I'm saying again, I support this land use, but there is, one can say there are services there, but there is clearly an inadequate infrastructure to support what we will now have opening in August, another school, a middle school, which is wonderful. The park is there. Acme Dairy Road has one community along Acme Dairy that has only one entrance, and that is Canyon Trails. This proposal, again, I love the design, but it has one entrance, which is a right, one egress, which is a right egress heading east on Boynton Beach Boulevard, and when asked how people could turn around and get toward the hospital or to the shopping areas just to the west, basically, people need to cut across three lanes of traffic quickly to get to the light, which is at the entrance to the Turnpike, and do a U-turn. I see that as problematic until such time as we have better infrastructure in the area. So, although that may not fall under our purview, I have to get it out there for consideration and understanding. I will support this as a land use, but I have grave concerns about the existing infrastructure and the safety of everyone there, especially considering that we will also be adding enormous intensity with the EH essential housing designation, which was also approved last year, and that is going to be a part of this whole area. So I put that out there for my fellow commissioners, for the Board of County Commissioners, and for zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anker?
No questions.
Penny?
I just have a question for staff, just from my own information. Part of the, part of the presentation, and I didn't see it in my packet, was there's a requirement or an assumption that there will be 2.39 residents per unit. Did I catch that right?
So that's in our code. It's our calculation for transferring from units to beds. So it's, 2.39 is based on, I think it was actually our 2010 census, which was the average persons per household in the county, and so that's just a way that we use to convert units to CLF beds by using that.
Even though these are 55-plus community, which would be entirely, nobody's going to have 2.39 people in their unit.
Right, we're not anticipating that number of people in a unit, exactly. It's just for bed conversion.
All right. Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you. Dagmar?
Yeah, just so you understand, Penny, how they get to the number of this many beds, they take the property, they multiply it times the units allowed on the property, which is eight, and then they take that number and they multiply it times 2.39, and that's how they get to the CLF. I'm definitely in support of this project. I was lucky enough to see a proposed site plan, and they're really going to do a nice job with this. But again, repeating Commissioner Roth's concerns, I believe Boynton Beach Boulevard, just west of the Turnpike, is Level F. Do we have anybody here from engineering to confirm that? I saw that written somewhere, and traffic is a grave concern for us in the area. The fact that it is an underpass, you know, under the Turnpike, so everything's bottlenecked onto Boynton Beach Boulevard. I really hope this becomes a priority to do something about it when it does come forward, but I, it's a nice project, and we're lucky to have it in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I, after listening to a couple of the commissioners, I just want to add, I've owned these...
Sam, pull your mic down.
I've owned these, this type of facilities in Delray, and the traffic generated from these facilities is next to nothing. Most of the people that are in the ALFs don't drive, even though they may or may not have a car. They don't drive, and staffs don't go off in complete shifts, like everybody changes their shift at seven o'clock. They stagger them, so the likelihood of the generation of traffic being an issue there is slim and none. Now, that doesn't take away from the road itself having issues, but that's another whole story.
Thank you, Sam. Okay. We do have a public comment card. Got one. Mr. Neil Ambrosio, if you're in the audience, you had indicated you wanted to speak on behalf of this.
Actually, I said I'm in support of it, and I'll spare you all the comments.
Okay. All right, then I'll just read in your commentary here. Mr. Ambrosio, who lives in Boynton Beach, is a, he is not a paid lobbyist, but he is involved with Boynton Ag Reserve Communities. We believe this is an appropriate use and compatible with the area, so we'll enter that into the record for you. Okay. Having done that, now if there's a motion from any of my fellow commissioners on this issue. Yes, Barbara?
Motion to approve the Erickson-Boynton Beach CCRC.
With the conditions?
Oh, exactly. With the conditions, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have to start pulling straws up here, you know. Dagmar, a second, did that? Okay, fine. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Again, I'll start down at this end with our newest member, Brian.
No, thank you.
Kylie?
No.
Sam?
No.
Angela? Lori, no? Moving down? No further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, please, and a roll call.
Barbara R.
Yes.
Laurie Veniker.
Yes.
Penny Pompey.
Yes.
Dagmar Braz.
Yes.
Sam Caliendo.
Yes.
Kylie Harper-Larson.
Yes.
Angela Van.
Yes.
Ankor Patel.
Yes.
Rick Stofich.
Yes.
Brian Stemberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. Thank you, staff, for the presentation, and good luck with the project. Okay, moving along to item 4A1. This is a privately proposed text initiation, Gold Coast Logistics.
And I have to recuse myself, Mr. Chair, because I own the house that's adjacent to this property, so the attorney has all of the papers that I've filled out, so I'm going to step off the dais for this particular agenda item. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Oh, gee, the clock. Okay, so, let's hear from the applicant on this particular one. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, George Gentile with 2GHO Inc. We are the landscape architects and planners on this project. On the simple request for a text initiation request, and I want to remind everybody that that's what we're here for, is just to initiate a request to the Commission for a text amendment. The phase two of this would be, if it's approved, would go to the, further to the land use change, as well as the flu amendment and the text amendment. So, the request is to change the location criteria for the commerce land use in the State Road 7 corridor. This request was brought in front of the County Commission back in 2022 when they reviewed it, and contrary, in my opinion, looking at the minutes, there wasn't a lot of discussion on it by the Commission. There was a lot, of course, public commentary on this situation, but the Commission kind of just went ahead with the staff report as it was, and so we're here to just go through the process of requesting that they evaluate this, because we think it's important to look at the location criteria with some of the smaller properties that are on the State Road 7 corridor. This is the request. It's to revise policy 1.55, and it's really to just change the location frontage on State Road 7 from Rio Grande Avenue to La Reina Road, and I think it's important to look at, and there's a word missing in here, and I'm going to correct myself on this, but that the properties on the west side of State Road 7 must share a common border with a property with commercial or industrial land use, and that was put in the commerce land use criteria for location. And I think that I will be showing you one of our reasons for asking for this text amendment as we go through this. So, it was, this CMR, which you all are aware of, was specifically set up for light industrial uses in the urban suburban area and the ag reserve tier. There was a consultant that went through a, that was hired by the county to do a report, and they brought forth several recommendations, which these, this criteria is part of that, to bring uses into the urban suburban tier on light industrial uses to support things in the urban suburban tier, but also in the ag reserve to support the agricultural activities there. They also made a comment in there that there needed to be other than agricultural jobs for the sports services, and so it was, it's important to understand that the smaller properties on State Road 7 have the opportunity to provide some of those additional jobs that are needed in that area. In this case, we will be supporting the agricultural community there with the intended end use of the property. And then you've had a lot of, of course, why we're here today is you've had a lot of industrial, light industrial requests in the area and commercial requests in this specific area, in the overall area, and so that's the other reason for the commerce land use to handle the influx that was happening on those. So this is the existing land use. This is our, the site of our clients, Gold Coast Logistics. It ends at La Reina Road, and it's just south of the Sunflower property that is the, that is, has an existing industrial and agricultural land use category on it. The, just to be transparent, the roadway that is at the north side of the Sunflower property is the, is the stopping point right now of the location criteria. And then, again, in the zoning, existing zoning, you can see what's been happening along the Atlantic Avenue area and the corridor along State Road 7, and the industrial, light industrial designation of the property just to the north of this, of the logistics property. Again, here's a, here's a little bit closer, and the dash line shows the commerce location criteria where it stops at Rio Grande, and it just misses the industrial, the industrial piece that's Sunflower, and our site is located in the red, and it shows the site, and La Reina Road is just at its southern border there. And you currently have a progression of the commerce land use and the light industrial uses. You have a transmittal that's been done on the EJ-KJ industrial project that is located, again, on the State Road 7 corridor west side. And so, the site that is below, that is our site, is about 6.33 acres, and it would be very difficult to use that for residential use on the, on the State Road 7 corridor, and would be more appropriate to be used for supporting the agricultural community. As we stated in our application, they're looking to do cold storage and their, their business offices at that location as well, to manage the, and they are a last-mile company, so it's getting food products to their final destination before consumer purchasing. So they are not a distribution center and could never do a distribution center on this site. This would be the extension of that. It's about a quarter of a mile, about 1,150 feet farther down the southern, the State Road 7 corridor. So we feel that the, the request justification is that it meets the intent to provide support services to the agricultural business, and the intended use of the commerce land use category. The requested change in boundary is a logical location, because on the west side, it will hit a road stopping point. The smaller properties in this location, as I said, would be better to serve the agricultural businesses in the area, and they, and they're limited size, so effectively not well-suited for residential development right in that section of the road of State Road 7 corridor, and again, would be better for support services. And as we stated earlier, we are adjacent to a light industrial, which is part of the criteria, although the corridor doesn't go that far. The light industrial is already there, and this property does meet that criteria if the corridor is changed. We have provided a couple of letters of support. This is from Roth Farms, supporting the request to modify it because of the need of this type of cold storage and agricultural support to the farming community, and we also have it from Top Shelf Agriculture, who's also a distributor of agricultural food products, and they have also sent in a letter of support to the Commission. With that, I will be available to answer any questions. I, thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. Yes. Okay, maybe we hear from staff.
Travis Goodson with the Planning Division. So this is the request to consider initiation of a private text amendment to, for the project known as Gold Coast Logistics with regard to the commerce location criteria. So for a brief overview on text initiation, all comprehensive plan, text, and map series amendments require initiation by the Board of County Commissioners. The request can be privately proposed or staff-proposed. Initiation by the Board authorizes staff to process a text amendment request and accept an associated future land use or development order amendment application, and at that time, a full staff report and recommendation would come afterwards. So Kevin went through this earlier with the commerce text updates, but the recently adopted commerce flu designation contains specific location criteria within the agricultural reserve. These include policy requirements that any parcel of land requesting the commerce flu have frontage and access on State Road 7, if north of Rio Grande Avenue, on Boynton Beach Boulevard, on Atlantic Avenue, or have access to these roads through existing commercial or industrial sites. This particular text amendment request centers on a 6.33-acre parcel located at the northwest corner of State Road 7 and La Reina Road, shown, outlined in red. To the north, you'll see the previously adopted Sunflower site, which has industrial, underlying AGR, and further to the north is the EJKJ commerce site in process. If the Board initiates this text... If the Board initiates this text amendment request, then the applicant will submit a future land use amendment application next month. So, again, the intent of this amendment is to modify a specific part of the commerce location criteria to allow the application of the commerce future land use designation along State Road 7 north of La Rina Road instead of the currently adopted Rio Grande Avenue. So, this graphic depicts the area surrounding the subject site. Subject site, again, in red. The red dash line shows the current eligibility segment along State Road 7, and it ends at Rio Grande Avenue, just south of the EJKJ Industrial Commerce Site in Process. The applicant's proposed text amendment would extend this line southwards by about a quarter mile to La Rina Road in order to allow this subject site to become eligible to apply for the commerce designation. Staff's assessment of the text amendment considered that the commerce future land use designation and supporting policies were adopted as recent as August 25, 2022, following over a year of workshops and public hearings on the topic for input. The existing location criteria resulted from area resident concerns regarding the location of commerce south of Atlantic Avenue extending down to Clintmore Road, which was seen as a predominantly residential corridor. After transmittal, the BCC directed staff to work with the public, and this existing language was a result of those discussions. Representatives of the applicant were present for these discussions in a public hearing and advocated on behalf of the public of the subject site. Ultimately, the Board adopted the existing criteria at Rio Grande Avenue and therefore excludes the subject site from requesting the commerce flu designation. So, in consideration of this information and as delineated in the published staff report, staff is recommending denial of the requested text initiation. And today's recommended motion would be to deny initiation. However, should the Board initiate the proposed amendment, staff will return with the full analysis and staff recommendation to be heard at this planning commission body and at the Board later on this year after review of the applicant's future land use amendment application. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We do have, in addition to the, we do have the letters from Roth and Top Shelf Agriculture as referenced in the applicant's presentation. We also have a letter in opposition from the Tierra del Rey Estates Board of Directors. It's not signed by anyone in particular, but it is in opposition to this. We do have a couple of public comment cards, and we do have one here from a Mr. Andrew Ripa, who represents the Tierra del Rey as the President of the Board. Is Mr. Ripa present? Oh, please. Please come to podium one, if you would.
I can sign that letter. It was my board.
Yeah, okay. I'm assuming that that letter is yours.
No problem.
Okay, no worries. If you state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, sure. Good morning. My name is Andrew Rips, 10322 El Perezo Place. I live in Tierra del Rey, and I was actually at the August 22 hearing. So, just listening to the next consultant talking about discussion, there was a lot of discussion. It was a day that I took off from my regular job, representing my community. And in terms of uses, it is a six acre lot, and it is right next to a road that enters 26 of our 78 homes. Our home lives in the agriculture, our association. It's a farming equestrian area. The, I think the Board of County Commissioners made the right decision then. I think the staff's recommendations are right again. And I think there's some important things, listening to the staff, if even it were, the door were considered to be open. This industrial note at 441 that we're seeing there, south of Atlantic, was already squared off. And it's squared off at a canal, and it doesn't back any residential community. To take it to La Rina Road, I have 26 of my neighbors and horses riding on this road for this little six acre parcel. I'd also ask you to look at the amendment. It says 95,000 square feet of a potential. That is not good use of that area. In fact, we are living on a residential corridor. As you follow planning, you'll also see Dakota opposed it, which is right across the street. And even if you open this up, whether the letters we've captured from Rio Poco, where it'd be one 18-wheeler, two 18-wheeler, or three 18-wheeler, you have line posts right now in front of Dakota, and you're going to inherit another problem if you open this cracked door for a second. And so, easement in and out, or thinking that they're going to go all the way down to Glades Road when Atlantic Avenue is right next door to the turnpike, is illogical. And lastly, I'd ask you to look at your own code, where if it's 95,000 square feet of storage, which we don't need, okay, this is a good use for residential down the corridor. But even your parking planning of 1,000 square feet per car or 250 for jobs, we have other areas in our community where this should be done. And this is a fairly new purchase, and people who come to Florida, they don't understand the plan. And so, the question is, is influence going to win over intention? I hope not. And on behalf of our Tierra del Rey owners, we can't have a warehouse backing the front and back of my neighbors. And so, this is my third. I'm not a professional. I would like to use slides, but you can't make a decision from overhead. You have to come down and see. And there is one more property not on this map, and I want it on the record.
If you could wrap up.
Okay, just one more. Code enforcement's doing a great job because on the south of La Rina Road, maybe perception seems that it's industrial, but it's not. And code enforcement will take that owner to task and make sure they clean it up. Thank you very much, Chairman.
We appreciate it. And is there Mr. Arnold Katz present, wanted to speak on this issue? Good morning, sir. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Good morning. My name is Arnie Katz. I live at 6123 Kaladium Del Rey Beach. I am also the Executive Vice President of the Alliance, and the Alliance, on behalf of our member communities, is opposed to this application for a variety of reasons, most of which are stated by the President of Tierra del Rey. But a 95,000 square foot facility with trucks would cause an immense problem to an already busy 441. For the trucks coming out of that facility to go to the turnpike at its closest entrance, they would have to go down, make a U-turn in front of Saturnia Isles, and then go back to Atlantic. And that's a horrible vision in my mind. Our community's members are all opposed to this, Rio Poco, Saturnia Isles, Dakota, Tierra del Rey. And we agree with them that this is a bad plan for that piece of property. As it is, the Commissioners said that south of Rio Grande should be considered residential and not commercial. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in. Okay. Any questions of the applicant or staff from my fellow Commissioners? I'll start with Dagmar down here, and we'll work our way down this way.
I have no questions.
Okay, Penny, questions?
I have a question. What's on this site now? What's there?
There's a landscape business on the southern portion of the property. The north portion is vacant.
Okay. So, it's a landscape business with trucks coming and going, or just a?
They do have, they do have vehicles, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
That's not true. It was a landscaping company. I'm sorry. I live here. I come in and out of this road. So, it was used for a landscaping company.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
And they're gone.
Okay. Questions for the staff or? Yes, no questions, Algar, right?
I have no questions.
Barbara, any questions?
Quick question of either applicant or staff. So, what's on that property to the south of it? Is that residential, or is that to the south of this property? Do we know what's on that property?
It's horse, horse equestrian use.
Okay.
Horse stables.
That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Sam, questions? Kylie? Brian? Okay, thank you. All right, no further questions up here. So, now, if someone would like to make a motion on this issue, then we can have discussion amongst the Commissioners.
So, if we recommend approval of staff recommendation, is initiation stopped here, or it still has to go to the Board of County Commissioners? Because I was trying to understand what exactly what he said.
It would still go to the Board of County Commissioners. You'd be providing that recommendation.
And if someone would like to make a motion, Barbara?
I move that we recommend denial of the initiation of this project.
Second?
Second from Sam? Okay. All right, now, now, as far as discussion goes, I'll just start off real quick. I've been kind of quiet today. This is kind of a catch-22. I think this is a worthwhile project in search of a appropriate location. I think I can understand where there is a need for this project based upon what I've seen in the, in the information we've been provided. And several of the letters of support for it, from both Roth and from Top Shelf Agriculture, set forth legitimate rationale for why this project is probably needed. Having said that, it's just not the right thing, in my opinion, for this particular location. I think the location is actually kind of small. The traffic is a nightmare. I live in Del Rey as well, not quite that far west, but, but I know the area quite well. So, again, it would be my hope that perhaps the applicants can find a better location for this so that they can provide these services to the agricultural community, but at the same time, be respectful of the adjacent communities, the residential, and, and the just abhorrent traffic in that area, which is getting nothing but worse every, every day of the week. So, I will unfortunately not be able to support this project in this location. But other discussion amongst the Commissioners at this point. Starting down at this end here with, with Brian.
You said what I would have liked to said. Thank you.
Thank you. Kylie?
Just to comment here that we have agriculture and residential juxtaposed to an ag use, you know, proposed ag use. And being sensitive to the fact that we, we have an agricultural-loving community with horses and, and houses is, is interesting because they don't want another type of agricultural use to go in, you know, with a wall next door. And, and I can understand that because it's very expensive property, and there's a certain quality of living that's there. We need these cooling cold storage facilities. We need them in this area. But I am very conflicted because of this particular location. Given, given what I know professionally for the amount of square footage that's need, needed, 100% correct about trucks, doesn't necessarily mean 18-wheelers. If we're talking about last mile facilities, you need to understand those are typically smaller trucks and vans, okay? That are being serviced. I'm very conflicted here. Very, very conflicted. If I might, could I ask a question of the staff? For this particular owner and its current land use designation, I understand that they can go forward with the Board, and the Board can decide whatever, whatever it wants. But what other options are available if the six acres isn't appropriate for residential use right now? What are the other options?
But it is, it is done for residential use. It is appropriate for residential use.
So, the site, oh, I'm sorry. The site has an AGR future land use designation, which would limit them to, you know, they could do one, one unit, or they could do agricultural uses that are allowed in the code under that, underneath the AGR land use.
So, that means that another farmer in the ag reserve, if they were growing, could lease this land. I'm just throwing this out here. It could be their packing house, and they would be allowed to put a cooling cold storage facility there. Uh huh. If they were actually farming themselves, yeah, because it would be a farming facility. Yeah. It could be. Is, but there's nothing, there's nothing else. They either, it's really residential or just AGR. We don't have anything else to offer.
Yep, you got it.
Okay.
Sam?
Just to reiterate what our fellow Commissioners have said, I think it's really a good project, and it is needed. I would go for that. But this is just the wrong place for it. Then, you know, there's plenty of other spaces that they can probably find that would be more adaptable to what they want to do.
I mean, I agree in terms of the use is needed. And since I've been on this Board, and I don't have the history, the conflict with the ag reserve, the residential and all that's going down, and I said this before, at some point, this County Commission and the counties to figure out some of the direction that we're going in as a county, because what I've seen over the time, the agricultural use that are there needs the support, and a lot of the support is not there for them. If this is the best, I don't know. But it's just the fact that what's going on in this county that I've seen since I've been on this Board in terms of creeping, creeping, crossing, creeping, the County Commission, they want to make a decision, come back, creeping, creeping, creeping. So, I mean, at some point, it needs to be decided what we're going to do as a, as a county as a whole to support the agriculture that's left here, which is not a whole lot that's left. And in terms of what, I mean, this thing, this whole, I agree that it's a use that's needed. Is it a use appropriate for this area? I mean, I wouldn't want to live on State Road 7. I wouldn't want to live there with my house. I mean, who wants to live there? Who wants to pull out there, try to get out their house for residential uses? But I'm still conflicted with, with this request.
Barbara? Algar?
Like me, fellow Commissioners, I do agree that the use is definitely needed. There is a severe lack of cold storage facilities, and there is farming out west that does need some of that, especially then to get it to maybe local markets or whatever they need to get the produce to and stuff accordingly. That being said, I think the public has spoken, I mean, in 2022 itself, and the discussions and everything, the public has spoken up that they don't want it over there. And they're currently still saying the same thing. And I also believe, you know, to a certain degree, building structures when everything else around there is not structures is probably not appropriate in that sense. But, you know, I'm a little conflicted, but I will side with the residents on this, in this area, and probably support staff on that.
Thank you. Penny?
Well, I think I join everybody else on the Commission that, yes, we're all conflicted. It's, it's something that's needed. Six acres is a really small piece of ground to do what needs to be done. I guess my, my issue is, what else are you going to see? What else are you going to do at six acre piece? I agree, you're not going to be able to have a single-family home. It's one unit per acre, not going to happen, or one unit for the six acres. I think that, you know, I think the other, the community to the west ought to buy the property and, and let it be part of their equestrian trail. If that's, if, if that's their goal, something's going to be built on this. We will see this back again, this piece of ground. It's not going away. The owner wants to develop into something, and it will be back to us. So, hopefully, it's something that is, doesn't create quite so much traffic, heavy traffic.
Dagmar?
I'm very disappointed that there are so many people on this Commission that are conflicted. Just last year, the County Commission adopted the fact that the line in the sand Just last year, the county commission adopted the fact that the line in the sand, no more development regarding commerce or anything like that, was north of Rio Grande Avenue. It's right here, last page of our packet. County already said that. This is a progression, even from Mr. Gentile's words, a progression. The line is in the sand. We got to stop the progression. These people that live here have worked hard to maintain an equestrian lifestyle. I'm sure that if this approval doesn't go through, the nursery owner will probably sell out to another nursery owner or because the five-acre tracts for equestrian are so rare in the area. I'm not worried about that. But again, they've already said just last year, we got to stop pushing out these boundaries. The other thing is, yeah, we need, you know, probably a cooling house, but look at all of the industrial AGR property that's on Atlantic Avenue that has nothing on it. Why wouldn't you put a use like this on a piece of property that already has the designation to allow this? Please do not push this line that was just designated last year any further south. Thank you.
Thank you, Dagmar. Okay. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? None? Okay. Seeing none, let's call the question, please. Press us for a call.
Barbara Roth?
Yes, to the motion to deny.
Penny Pompey?
Yes, to deny.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes, to deny.
Sam Caliendo?
Yes, to deny.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
Ankar Patel?
Yes.
Rick Stolbit?
Yes.
Brian Stenberg?
Yes.
Motion passed. It's mine by nine.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Okay, last item on the agenda for today, item 4A2, Bednar Farms Agricultural Market Text Initiation. I think we hear from Jennifer again.
Good morning. Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I appreciate the opportunity to present the text amendment for the Bednar Farms project. It's not usual that I start my presentation introducing my client, but I just, in this case, I think it's important. It supports the request for the text amendment. The Bednar family actually moved down here to South Florida in the 1950s and established their farming facility in 1960. There have been three generations of Bedners farming in Palm Beach County and South Florida. It's still a family-owned and operated business, and that's who I'm representing. We are requesting a text amendment to add a definition for agricultural marketplace. And then we're requesting to allow an agricultural marketplace to be part of an AGR MUPD preserve area. This is the text amendment. If the board initiates the text amendment, then we would be back before you with a comp plan amendment. The specific language that we're requesting to be placed in the comprehensive plan provides a definition for agricultural marketplace that states, "A use that is accessory, incidental, and subordinate to a bona fide agricultural use in the AGR tier conducted to allow for the sale of agricultural products and enhanced opportunities for visitors, which generates income for the owner or operator of the bona fide agricultural use, adding economic viability to the farming operation." The second item for the text amendment is under the future land use element. We would simply add a sentence that says, "An agricultural marketplace as defined in the introduction and administrative element is allowed within the required preserve area for an AGR MUPD subject to the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code." The Bednar family farmer's market is currently located on State Road 7, halfway between Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue. If you look at the site, the site's identified there in yellow. It's at the southwest corner of 441 and Lee Road. You can see the farming operations that surround the marketplace. That land is owned and farmed by the Bednar family. This is a view of the marketplace. You can see State Road 7 at the bottom of the slide, and north is pointing to the right. And I'm showing you this slide to indicate that the marketplace really is accessory and incidental to the agricultural operation that exists surrounding the marketplace. All of this is considered bona fide agriculture. The use of the marketplace adds a value added to the agricultural use and also helps to support that local agricultural production that occurs surrounding the area. With the support of the text amendment, we would be placing a conservation easement on the marketplace that would continue to allow it to exist or encourage the existence of it in perpetuity. So the agricultural marketplace actually helps to produce, to support the local production of agriculture. The Bednar market partners not just with their own family farm, but they sell produce from our other local farmers. They sell juices and drinks from Indian River citrus farmers. They provide honey from our local honey and bee industry. And overall, they sell the fruits and vegetables that are grown in the area. In addition to the marketplace that supports the local agriculture, the Bednar family has partnered with many of the Palm Beach County schools. And those of you that have children, your children may have had a field trip out to Bednar Farms. They go visit the wildlife refuge, then they go to the farm. They learn about where their fruits and vegetables come from. They provide, there's a cheeky hut. They do some educational classes underneath that, depending on the age appropriateness for the children. So it's a real benefit to the kids in the Palm Beach County area to be able to have that field trip. They also support a U Pick 'em so that families can come out. They can pick their strawberries and have them laid. And again, just the notion of promoting and enhancing agriculture in our agricultural tier. There's events and festivals. I've been to the pumpkin patch many years in a row, and it's a great place for families to come together. They go out into the fields. They pick a pumpkin. They take rides through the sunflowers. So lots of activities, all with the intent of preserving and enhancing agriculture in the ag reserve. So this specific request, it might have been a little confusing in our application, but I've identified the market there on the south side of Lee Road. And what we're proposing to do, if this text amendment is initiated, is there's five acres on the south side of Lee Road. The Bedners own that property. That is the preserve parcel for the all-season CLR in the ag reserve. So all seasons had off-site preservation, which is like most developments in the ag reserve. Their preserve is off-site. That's an off-site preserve parcel. We're proposing to take the preservation from the northwest corner and move it to the southwest corner and place it on the marketplace. That's what this text amendment would allow. The comprehensive plan requires that if you request a text amendment, there must be a concurrent land use change request. So the proposed land use change, which would come in, would be to identify commerce as a land use for the northwest corner and also for that area south of the marketplace. That's a requirement for the text amendment, so that would be our land use request. And just in conclusion, the purpose of the ag reserve tier and all those master planning efforts that everyone participated in was to preserve and enhance agriculture. That's why we have the ag reserve tier. The ag marketplace is another value-added agricultural use, similar to the packing facilities that farmers need. That marketplace supports the local farmer. It promotes the idea to buy local, and it also contributes to sustainable farming. In addition to staff support, I hope that you'll be able to support this proposed text amendment. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate it. Okay, may we hear from staff? Is anyone from, oh, here we are.
Actually, since I'm here, in the interest of time, I'll just stay here, even though I'm on the any me podium, if you will. My name is Brian Davis, Principal Planner with the Planning Division and Head of the Development Implementation Section. Usually, I participate more in zoning items, but this is much more closely tied to zoning than sort of the average comp plan amendment. So this is, again, an initiation of a conference of plan text amendment. So this is the preliminary Phase 1 portion of it. As has been discussed earlier, if this is initiated by the board in May, then there would be a privately initiated text amendment, Phase 2, and the site-specific, which Smorton just went through. So very simply, this is two elements of the conference of plan, the future land use element. It would establish a, excuse me, allow for, make a policy allowance for an agricultural marketplace in the future land use element in a preserve parcel for ag reserve MUPDs only. And then also, it would create a definition where it would memorialize what an agricultural marketplace is in the plan, so it's very clear what that would be. Fundamentally, that's the text amendment that is being proposed. Just a little bit about the location. Ag reserve tier, we're on the west side of State Road 7. Southwest corner of State Road 7 and Lee Road is the actual location of the existing Bedners market, as we've talked about. The text amendment is only this, well, this red parcel right here. That is what's being talked about. It is currently ag reserve future land use, ag reserve zoning district. I'll get into the history, but I wanted to give you kind of the context. It is part of an overall 82-acre parcel. Most of that is under a conservation easement, but it is not the part that fronts State Road 7. It is a preserve, has a conservation easement. The 14 or so acres on the east that front are not under easement. They are straight AGR zoning, straight AGR land use. And that's their approval that they have. And then obviously, you have the pieces to the north and south that are proposed for the future comp plan amendment, site-specific amendment, if it goes through. It's also a very interesting point in this parcel's, or the aerial image, if you will. It's surrounded by agricultural uses right now, but if you understand the approvals that we have, and if you've driven by it lately, you know that's eternal light up there, but that was the old Whitworth Farm, and they've now demolished the thing. That's now the GL development. It is in the process of development. So even though it's surrounded by agricultural uses right now, it will not be at least in the future, so. Okay, the agricultural marketplace. This had a rather strange birth, if you will. In 2012, there was a workshop in January of that year to talk about allowing or consideration of multiple uses to be allowed in the ag reserve. There were two that came forward. One was packing plants. The other one was the concept of a green market. The green market was what came out of that and ultimately became the Bednar market. However, I want to talk about, because it was worked about in such a way that it did not require a conference of plan text amendment at that time because it had AGR zoning, AGR land use. And so what was, is an allowance was made within a bona fide agricultural operation in the ag reserve that had frontage on the appropriate road. It could be an accessory use to the bona fide ag operation. So then it was further constrained, maximum 24,000 square feet of use. It could have about 2,000 square feet maximum, or 10% of the land or of the overall operation could be for general retail. That's all, again, to keep it from being a commercial use, as accessory to the overall ag. So that's why that big parcel to the back, that's where that comes into play. 24,000 square feet maximum is the overall, no matter what the size is, and it required a Class A approval from the county commission. The board adopted that text amendment to the code. Then in 2013, the board approved the marketplace. And the idea was, I don't know why there's one bullet point up there. We missed that one. It encourages the preservation of areas, or helped to do that, but through giving them an outgrowth. And it established, I'm not sure why that's there. Must be a little. So again, we talked about Bedners, but this was how it was. It was then built. It was constructed at that point in time, even though Bedners had been a longtime agricultural, you know, operation. This is a relatively recent, about 10 years, and it's been, I think, successful by all accounts. However, this is the crux of the matter. Our assessment is that there has already been an allowance made for an agricultural marketplace in 2012. It was allowed, but it was not allowed in a preserve. That is the fundamental issue. Do you want to allow this now in a preserve? It would expand the allowable uses in an agricultural preserve, MUPD, those preserves. It would result in no net gain because of the way that they're going to shift one preserve over to this, and then potentially those would come in with commerce. And that's the last thing, is you could see additional commerce coming in. We've heard at this, you know, hearing that there have been other possible uses that could come in. Not commenting on that. That's just if you initiate this, that's the other part of it. The site-specific would be the commercial. The actual change, once the text goes through, would be a zoning level approval. However, we are looking at this because this initiation affords additional opportunity to consider a much more in-depth. This is a very high-level review. And so the idea is, if it's initiated, it gives this board and the county commission the opportunity to look at, consider, and evaluate at a much more in-depth level those policy issues. And then in conclusion, so the staff recommendation would be to initiate for those reasons. And our recommendation for you all, our recommendation would be that you all would recommend that the board initiate the text amendment. And then we would bring this back at a future hearing for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay. Questions?
My understanding is, when the Bedners, and I admire the Bednar family. I have known the Bednar family since I was eight. We actually went to Sunday School together in Pompano. My understanding is, the Bedners, again, his father and my father were friends, so this is really tough, but I know what I'm supposed to be doing up here. My understanding is, when the Bedners started opening up this produce stand, it was kind of like, is it retail? Is it produce? You know, where does this actually stand? And staff really went through a lot of work. I think Mr. Davis is the only one that has enough longevity in here to remember this conversation. And the word agriturism came up. And so it was like, okay, agriturism. Something that will attract people into the ag reserve to see what the ag reserve is about, what farming is about. You know, the picking. They do an excellent job, Bednar Farms. I'm not taking away from that. Their pumpkin patches and their hayrides and everything. It's a really cool thing to be. And I believe that is what agriturism was supposed to be. There were also rules that were put in place in the fact that it could only be a minimum of 80 acres. And low and behold, that's exactly what the Bedners had, was 81 acres. So there was another stipulation to allow the Bedners to do what they've been doing, and they've really been doing a good job. I am totally confused as far as why is the word commerce center even coming into this? But don't answer that yet. The other thing is, I want everybody on this board to realize that the road between these two parcels is called Lee Road. And that is the entrance into the Loxahatchee Preserve. The Loxahatchee Preserve is a treasure of Palm Beach County. I've been there many times. If you haven't been there, yeah, really, that is access for public to really see what the Everglades is all about, okay? For us to allow the preservation to be moved to something that is, they're making money off of this. They're doing a great job. But why would we allow the preservation parcel to be taken off, put over here, and knowing they've already told us in the future they want to go for a commerce designation? So that means small warehouses. So that means small warehouses, parking, you saw the list of things that can be done. Bednar's are doing a really good job. They did have considerations to be allowed to do what they're doing. They have the 80 acres. County bent backwards, now it's 13 years ago, to allow them to do what they're doing, and they're doing a really great job. I say let's keep it the way it is and deny this so that we don't look at commerce on the entrance to the Loxahatchee Preserve and on both sides of the vegetable stand of Bednar. Thank you.
Any? Nothing? Barker?
Staff's presentation was very good on the history, because I was missing some of that. I guess my only clarification that I need straight up is, on the text amendment that is being recommended, they've asked for enhanced opportunities for visitors. What is that?
I'm not aware of that reference. Do you have a page number or?
Yeah, it's on Exhibit 1A1, under new definition. When they're talking about agricultural marketplace, it says conducted to allow for the sale of agricultural products or enhanced opportunities for visitors. What is enhanced opportunities for visitors?
I believe that's the vents, the sunflower hayrides and the pumpkin patches.
But this is very, very general when you say enhanced opportunities for visitors.
Right. So we took this agriculture marketplace is already defined in the ULDC, so we picked up that definition because it applied specifically to this marketplace and essentially copied and pasted for this definition. And generally, yes, the comp plan should be broad, whereas the code would then have the specifics.
Okay. Fair enough.
Just to add to that point, if you would, if you look at Page E10, it has Exhibit 4 that shows the proposed ULDC amendments, but also has the existing code. That same language is repeated there.
Right, and I agree, but I think it's a lot more creative now, what people can do with the code as opposed to what it was back when codes were created.
No, I understand. Well, again, this code language is 11 years old now. To Ms. Braz's point, there was kind of the elephant in the room, if you will, is the phrase agritourism. It was written all around, but that has a specific statutory definition. It's regulated by a slightly different statute, is my understanding. And the idea is to say, here's an allowance under bona fide ag that we're doing it. We're trying to steer you clear. You're coming and getting it, and you're clearly establishing yourself as bona fide ag and as accessory to that and avoiding that banner. But for everyday understanding, it's effectively acknowledging that there's some sort of other value-added agricultural enhancement that's going on. And so that's what that language was about. I was involved from the planning side on that code side to make sure it was consistent with the plan.
Okay. I guess another question, just to follow up, is, you know, and just in earlier, and we heard when we're trying to do stuff, there's a preserve requirement, whether you go off-site or you stay onsite and stuff accordingly. Because this is affecting a preserve location, would that be a requirement that's being put in for them to then supposedly off-site give additional preserve location or something?
The way that we've had these occur in the past is there's effectively a one-for-one swap. Whatever the acreage is being removed from preserve, a common certain amount of preserve requirement is then being brought in to replace it. So there's, there is a, to use my phrase, there is a no-net loss of preserve, but you still have the same amount whenever we've seen this. It's just it's whatever parcel for whatever parcel or parcels.
Right. I understand, but because you're doing a text amendment, which is going to affect the preserve area, is that additional language that could potentially be thought about?
We haven't considered it because that's been more just by processing the individual zoning actions that are required. That's the level, usually zoning. All we're saying here is for this text amendment, it's just putting the allowance in and anchoring it to plan for the zoning code to go then make those future changes, and those then are handled through zoning processes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Barbara?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Davis. Okay. I actually wrote down your term memorialize what an ag marketplace is. I like that. My concern is looking down the road in a reference to commerce use, and I heard you referencing some, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but to me, it sounded like some concerns in the future, but for now, you are memorializing, suggesting the memorializing of an agricultural marketplace. It's really hard to put a hypothetical, but, you know, what if we were faced with a commerce use in the ag reserve on Lee Road, entrance to Loxahatchee? Would that trigger something that would have staff recommend denial? I have to ask that as a hypothetical, but--
Yeah, I mean, at this stage, anytime there's a proposed site-specific amendment, we'll go through the rigorous analysis, so I wouldn't state today what a recommendation would be at this point without--
But the potential application exists.
Would open, yes. Yes, it does. That potential does exist. You are correct.
Thank you.
I actually just have one question, because I am somewhat familiar with the area, having been there a number of times. The actual entrance to the Loxahatchee Wildland Preserve is probably half again further down Lee Road, correct? From the property, almost double the width of the area in red, the actual entrance, where the signs are off to the right there where you enter into the Loxahatchee Preserve?
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact mileage, but you are correct. It is a little ways down that corridor.
Further. Right. Okay. All right. Very good.
I remember this. I was on, most of this happened through Eldrab, and we wrote the code, the ULDC, and it, I was in the subcommittees that developed that code, for the agricultural marketplace. And I remember I was, I did, I tried to write a code for agritourism to try to get it put into the code, but the issue was that, yeah, there was, because of the state and all the other, we couldn't have an agritourism portion of the code that we can say if you do this. It was, I remember it clearly. William Cross, he was so terrific. He was really terrific, the principal planner there for zoning. And we worked on this for months and months to help the farmer. And so this, I can understand where they're going with this. Of course, they maybe want commerce up there, commerce down there. This MUPD preserve, if this is initiated, I would like to see what possible unintended consequences can happen to have, to allow preserves in MUPD preserves to have a marketplace, an agricultural marketplace, like where else could this be? And I was actually, I was speaking with Jennifer Morton to ask her questions about that, and she did indicate there is a maximum, of course, with the agricultural marketplace, 24,000 square feet. We know that. I wouldn't want to see that, even whether, wherever else it does occur, I would like to see that kept, that it wouldn't be more than 24,000 square feet. That would be great. One thing about the positive, more positive side of this, this is an initiation. It's not a transmittal. So initiation, what we always say is that it's for staff to take hold of it and get more information and bring it back to us. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against initiating. There's one thing to think about. They've got this, it's a 14-acre piece, correct, south of Lee Road. They could go and just ask for that entire 14 acres to be commerce, and it could be a much larger project, light industrial sort of project. This way, you're actually splitting a little above there, a little, you'll have smaller projects. That's one plus to that. So it, I would, I would, I would go for the initiation to see what comes out of this and what staff brings. But keeping in mind that we want to see where else can this possibly happen for MUPD preserves, and I don't think there's any other, there might be more MUPD preserve land in the agricultural reserve, but maybe, I don't think this is the only piece. That's something you would be looking into. And of course, keeping that 25,000-square-foot maximum, because we don't want to see an MUPD preserve be all store and parking and, okay. Thank you.
Andrew? Sam? No? Ali?
How about applause for ingenuity and consideration and asking tough questions that our agricultural community needs to answer? Because as we've stated earlier today, we got to have a way to get things to a marketplace. These folks own land and have been incredible business owners, great employers, responsible environmentalists, and they sought an opportunity to feature their products and other products. But they also have the same rights and privileges with their lands that should be afforded to them in democracy, just like everybody else. So to echo what Lori said, this is an initiation. Let's ask the tough questions. Let's come up with the answers, and let's find a solution to keep agriculture, not just Bednar Farms, but any other people that might be afforded an opportunity, the ability to do that, as well as let's give a family who has invested and continues to invest in our community the opportunity to further their agricultural commitment.
Thank you. Brian?
I have a question of staff, if you don't mind.
Sure.
When we were originally discussing this, they were talking about a minimum of 80 acres in order for them to be able to do this project. That was the initial, right. So if they take this property out, this 14 acres and this five acres, and they turn it into commerce in the center in the thing, are they still going to be allowed to do Bednar Farms as we know it today?
Yes. Back in Exhibit 4, they also have their proposed zoning changes, and they're proposing to reduce the acreage for the minimum contiguous. It would be down to 70.
Okay. So the county made a rule, but they're going to ask the county to change that rule now too, from 80 to 70 in order for them to do this, right? Okay. And then my last comment is, while Ms. Morton said that, I hope you, you know, follow staff's recommendation, it does say initiation of this amendment does not indicate staff report for the final developed policy language or the associated future land use language. Staff is reflecting what you just said and said, yeah, let them go forward and let them talk about it and hash it out, but it doesn't mean we necessarily support the, I just want to make that clear, that staff is not necessarily supporting the request. Thank you.
No further questions. Entertainer motion?
I'll motion to initiate, as staff recommends, the proposed text amendment.
I second.
Second. Okay. As far as discussion goes, I like this, actually. I think we do need to go forward with this. I think it's a worthwhile cause for all the reasons that we've heard up here on the dais. You know, I respect, you know, we want to preserve the integrity and the character of the natural areas and the preserves, and, you know, I've traveled around the country, been to a lot of national parks, as well as in other parts of the world, and almost every entrance to every national park, there is some level of commercial. You just need to know where they are. Some of these things are tucked away pretty good. And to be candid, this area is tucked away pretty well. You almost have to go looking for it. Having said that, again, this is initiation. Let's see what the plans come back, if and when they come back and how they come back, and we can deal with it then, but I will support this. I see no reason not to go forward with this, but any other discussion from my fellow commissioners?
No.
Nothing on the side?
My only thing is, is I'm supporting the initiation so that staff can do some more research on this, but I would look at even the text that is being provided and see if there's some clarifications that you can add to the text, because whatever you're going to be planning is going to be going into the future, and I think it's important that you look at the text also, not just the general intent of what's happening.
Anything from Barbara? Good?
No, thank you.
To my left? Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, let's call the question, please.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Braz?
Yes.
Sam Caliendo?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Absolutely, yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
Encore Patel?
Yes.
Rick Stofen?
Yes.
Brian Stember?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, precious. Okay. That concludes our agenda for today. We meet again on May 12th. Do we have any comments from my fellow commission members? Just general welfare comments? Anyone?
I just have a question of staff, if I can, about these, this whole agenda here. Is this going to be on the May 3rd with the county commissioners?
Yes. So the text initiations will be considered by the Board on May 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
And also Erickson for transmittal, and that's it. Lakewood Crossing's a small scale, so that will go to May BCC zoning.
Okay.
So.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any other comments down here from anyone? Okay. Anything from our executive director? Thank you so much. And from the attorney? No comment cards? We're good?
No.
I could fill one out if you'd like. No, okay.
I'm fine.
Anything from planning?
Just one. So as you'll remember, this was a while ago now, the Indian Trails Grove, Hyder West, known as the swap. That was before the Planning Commission then was postponed at the transmittal hearing by the Board of County Commissioners last year. That is on the agenda for May 3rd. So I just wanted to remind you all, so everyone's aware that that is now coming back for transmittal.
That'll be a fun one.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Before we leave? It brought something up. There was a period of time last year, and I'm not exactly sure how many months it went on, when part of your report, you all report, was to fill us all in on what happened at the BCC with the things that we voted on. And I found that very helpful, because I can't keep track, I'm sorry, it's not my whole life, but I can't keep track of what we do and then what they do. So if we could bring that back, it would really be helpful for me.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I did start doing that last year, and I think the last BCC hearing, I did not do that after. So yes, I will make sure, so for instance, after the May 3rd, at our next Planning Commission hearing, which we will not be having a Planning Commission in May.
Okay.
So yes, you get a month off, but at the June Planning Commission, I'll make sure to do a run-through of each item before the Board, so everyone's aware of what happened.
And if I might, Chair? Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Pompey. That reminded me, after, I believe, the last Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I was there, and I believe I caught the planning director at some point on the way out, but I complimented him and really to staff, over these last number of years, I've really appreciated that when I go to a BCC meeting and I read what has come from the Planning Commission or from Zoning Commission, there's more of a flavor of our discussion. It isn't just, you know, they voted unanimously or they denied. There's a little bit of an explanation, and I know that is more work for you to extract whatever salient points you think, you know, have been made, but I think it's really helpful for those people who just go to the BCC, focus on that. They then see the agenda, and they get a little bit of a flavor of what the discussion was. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments down here to the left from the commissioners? No?
Sure, I'll say something.
Please.
I wanted to thank staff for your thorough presentation and explanations and the answers to the questions that came from the dais. I know I was awfully quiet, and part of that was to also hear what my fellow commissioners have to say, and I really appreciate your perspectives and your experience and your wisdom and so on that you bring to the table. I am awfully greened, this being my first meeting, but I appreciate your warm welcome this morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve alongside you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Wow, everybody jumped on that one. Okay. All right, so we'll see you in June, I guess, right? Very good.